Are we good to get started? Okay, so this is the Tuesday, June 25th, 2024. Meeting for the Johnson County Planning Commission. Do you want to do roll call?
Gregory Wolf.
Present.
David Paderas.
Here.
Kelly Rast.
Present.
Brad Miller is absent. Lindsey Grissay.
Here.
Fred Starrett.
Here.
Stephen McGank is absent. Tim Orick is absent. Leslie Hind.
Present.
Craig Connell.
Here.
Andrew Logan.
Here.
And Kevin Hogan.
Here.
And I will go ahead and proceed with the hybrid statement. This meeting is now being recorded in the board hearing room with planning commission members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. For Zoom participants wishing to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app at the start of the agenda item on which you desire to comment. Comments will be received from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. When it is your turn to speak, the moderator moderator will recognize you by the name or phone number used to join the Zoom webinar. Please state your name and the city and state where you reside for the record, followed by your comments. All public speakers will be limited to two minutes unless the chair designates a different time period. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call 913-715-9666. Board members, staff and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking and please speak into the microphone so that the people attending via Zoom can hear you and your comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We're presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you. And I will note that Stephen McGank has arrived at 5:46.
Okay, so I think that that establishes that there's a quorum for today, obviously. I think you want to start with the election of the officers.
Sure, Madam Chair, Jay Leipzig. As in accordance with our bylaws, section 5.01, in June of every year, we have an annual meeting. And that annual meeting in June is the election of officers. And so you're where the each officer, the chairman and the vice chair serves a one-year term. So the first item on the agenda this evening is to elect a chairman of the planning commission for one year in accordance with our bylaws. And so with that, Madam Chair, do you want me to just go ahead and take nominations from the floor? So with that, I'll open it up and take nominations from the floor.
Nominate Craig Connell. I nominate Lindsey for another year. Chair.
Second.
Wait a second.
She was awesome last year.
Okay.
Thank you.
That being said, any other nominations? Okay, so we'll close the nominations and take a vote on the election of the chairman. I guess could, yeah, let's do a roll call vote just to be.
Gregory Wolf.
I vote in favor.
David Paderas.
Aye.
Kelly Rast.
Aye.
Lindsey Grissay.
I should abstain.
Fred Starrett.
Aye.
Stephen McGank.
Aye.
Leslie Hind.
Aye.
Craig Connell.
Aye.
Andrew Logan.
Aye.
And Kevin Hogan.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll turn it back over to you.
And then do we also elect a vice chair today?
Yes, yeah, the same procedure.
Okay, and so I guess I will go ahead and nominate our vice chair for another year. Does that work for everybody else? Any seconds on that?
Kelly Rast, I'll second.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead and do a roll call vote again. Gregory Wolf.
Aye.
David Paderas.
Aye.
Kelly Rast.
Aye.
Lindsey Grissay.
Aye.
Fred Starrett.
Stain.
Okay, Stephen McGank.
Aye.
Leslie Hind.
Aye.
Craig Connell.
Aye.
Andrew Logan.
Aye.
And Kevin Hogan.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Lovely. So thank you very much, and let's have another great year of collaboration. So I think on to now would be the public comment portion of the planning commission meeting. Do we have any public comments that need, would like to be made?
We do not have anyone signed up.
Okay, anybody in the audience in the gallery? Nope. Okay. So then I think we'll move on to disclosure of conflicts of interest or ex parte communications. If anybody's had any communications with people that they would like to disclose, now's the time.
Just a comment from me. This is Andrew Logan. While there's no official action to be made, I think it's just important for the purpose of disclosure and to be forthcoming that our law firm represents Johnson County Park and Recreation District. And while there's no action here to be heard, I think it's just best that I put it out there and make that clear.
Perfect, yeah. And I think, yeah. I think that the way that the conflict is written is like you have to have a direct pecuniary interest. So it's probably tangential, but I think if you see something that gives you pause, feel free to, you know, take action.
Sure. If there was anything that were to come before the board, an official action, I would be accusing myself.
For sure. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda for tonight? Okay, hearing none. Can I get, talking about the approval of the meeting minutes from the April 23rd, 2024 meeting? Does anybody have any corrections or modifications to those? And if not, can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move. Second.
And do we need a roll call for that approval of the minutes?
I would say no, but just with somebody being on Zoom, maybe it wouldn't hurt to go ahead and do that.
Okay.
I don't know. Listen, you're kind of the expert on it.
No, we can do roll call. Gregory Wolf.
I vote in favor.
David Paderas.
Aye.
Kelly Rast.
Aye.
Lindsey Grissay.
Aye.
Fred Starrett.
Aye.
Stephen McGank.
Aye.
Leslie Hind.
Aye.
Craig Connell.
Aye.
Andrew Logan.
Aye.
And Kevin Hogan.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Wonderful. So I think we're going to get an update for the Johnson County Parks and Recreation Projects staff. And so, Mr. Leipzig, would you, is there anything you want to do to introduce the topic?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as kind of an update. And if you've been on the planning commission before, we try to provide some kind of an update every year on an annual basis on what JCPRD, Johnson County Parks and Recreation District, and their current activities. We also do the same for wastewater and also for public works. And so tonight is one of those evenings, these afternoons, where we will have an update from Parks and Recreation, talk about their current projects. And Georgia Sizemore is here. Georgia is the Planning and Development Manager with JCPRD. I've got a brief presentation for you to talk about some of the things going on in Johnson County and Parks and Recreation District. I wanted to highlight, though, some things that are going on in the, you know, the former Sunflower Army ammunition site, which is the, the, that area that was annexed last year by the city of DeSoto. There's a lot of activity in that area. There's also an additional, some parkland going around that site as well. So we'll be talking more about that here this next year as well. So a lot of activity going on, especially in the western part of the county, but we're excited to have JCPRD here this evening.
Hi, everyone. Georgia Sizemore. Thank you for having me tonight. I trust you can hear me okay? Thank you. Okay, so I'm Georgia. I'm the Planning and Development Manager for JCPRD, Johnson County Park and Rec District. And I'm happy to be here tonight. Just wanted to note that the dates in this presentation indicate the funding year, and so that would typically be the start of design. It isn't necessarily the end or completion. Just wanted to say that out loud to everyone. So just want to start on the bigger picture first, even though this is countywide. We've completed our legacy plan update in last fall, basically, and the JCPRD board accepted it. The four categories you see streamline the 2015 legacy plans priorities into the four that you see here. So the, we are, and on the bottom part shows our basic funding situation. We're about 46% funded. And given how highly JCPRD ranks in the annual community surveys, the JCPRD board is assessing options to try to increase services to the public. So just wanted you to know that all of our plans and projects have this framework about them. Heritage Park Lake Water Quality Improvements, this is underway now. So on to projects. The larger image is one of the better views we had. It's still from late last fall. It's of the four bay of the lake. The lake is having silt and sediment that has built up over the last 40-plus years in its existence so that we can increase its use for recreational purposes. It'll be quite wonderful. So the four bay area is being planted now. I don't have a good drone shot of that yet. We'll certainly get them along the way. Over 220,000 cubic yards of material have been removed so far, so tremendous amount. So I love the photo on the upper left. It gives some scale. It's a six-foot gentleman standing on a really giant hunk of rock, so you can get a feel for how deep it is. I just want to say I included this because I think Heritage Park is technically in the unincorporated area, so correct me if I'm wrong there, Jay. I think it's surrounded by, yeah, thank you. Thought, anyway, so I have a few things on that. So Heritage Park, also off-leash area, 2024. We're working on some improvements to the area. We have gravel trails surrounding it. We're simply trying to pave them and create a better situation that gets less muddy.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Yeah, I ask a question at this point.
Feel free.
Does that include hard walking paths around the park?
This would be just the off-leash area, which I should have oriented you, is on the northwest corner of Heritage Park.
That's what I'm speaking about.
Thank you. The intent is to have a paved trail, the intent, that's what we're planning for, a paved trail surrounding it.
Big thumbs up.
I think so. It's a very popular.
Up tonight, and a lot of twisted ankles and even blown knees have happened on those existing cart or walking paths.
Goodness. Well, we're trying to make it better.
Probably three times the walking traffic there than we do on the rest of the park.
It is a.
Just, just a guess.
It is a highly visited area. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that.
We're working on it. Greater Kill Creek Area Master Plan, Jay mentioned this, and I know a chunk of this is certainly DeSoto now, but I think it warrants discussing. The planning, we have a master planning effort that includes Kill Creek Park, Kill Creek Streamway, Sunflower Nature Park, and portions of the Sunflower Army Ammunitions Plant that JCPRD will be receiving, as well as a natural resource plan for the whole area. So the area on the right, if you can see where the red is. Can I do my mouse? Yes. Okay, so you can see Kill Creek Park is here. The streamway basically goes along this area. Can you guys track my mouse? Okay, thank you. Certainly Panasonic is here, K-10, here's Sunflower Nature Park. And then these are areas that have been discussed from Sunflower Redevelopment Company that we could be receiving. So there's a lot of information gathering going on now. I have a picture of Roberts Lake House here, an old officers sort of club that could be on the historic register. We've got a lot of good opportunity there. Lot of information gathering going on, and certainly conversations are occurring with Sunflower Redevelopment to try to work on that finalized outline so that we can keep progressing on the plan. We're about to enter into public input. I saw a question.
Yeah, Craig Connell, I have a question. So I noticed KU's got some property, K-State's got some property. Are there discussions with those entities about integration somehow and what they're doing with their property versus our park system?
They're one of many amounts of stakeholders that we have that we'll be including in the process as we gather public input. We definitely want to collaborate and work well with people where it makes sense for everybody. Thank you.
Georgia, I was just going to mention Jay Leipzig. The, if you look at the 2,000 acres roughly, right?
Yes, sir.
Around, surrounding Sunflower, and then with the existing Kill Creek Park, that'd be 2,900 acres. That would be the largest park in Johnson County, correct?
That's correct.
So it provides kind of a nice natural buffer around that Panasonic facility.
Will be good. Heritage Park Master Plan, again, this unincorporated island. We're kicking this off third quarter, late third quarter to start an effort. We want to look at Heritage Park as a whole. We have a lot of different things happening at this park. It's very active. We have, certainly I've listed out the many different things. We want to, we want to have everybody involved and look at it as a whole as we plan out 15, 20 years so that we can be doing the right things for the community. There will be a lot of public input, as with all of our master plans. But the idea is to get a lot of public input from all of these entities so that we can do the right thing, planning, moving forward. I think it'll be an exciting process. Camp Ranch Trail, we are getting close to starting on this one, so fingers crossed it'll be built this year. We've had several starts and stops over the years, some of them financially related, some of them pandemic related. Lot of things happening, but we think we're going to be able to do it here soon. We're going to be acting as the general contractor, and we only have the land disturbance to receive plus tree clearing permission from the state. So we're working on wrapping those up with a bow so we can get going. Hope you can see it's going from basically 175th to 171st. There's no good place yet to connect to Mission, even with the new work that's going on there. So we're going to have just a little turnaround at the end, and we'll leave connections to a future date. Still be a good trail to have. We're working on installing accessible dock facility at Kill Creek Lake, actually all throughout our system. We're looking at doing this as well. On the right, you're seeing one of two accessible launches that we have at Shoney Mission Park, and we're working on another one at Kill Creek Lake. So we're gathering lead times now, putting together our schedule. Similar things at Timber Ridge Adventure Center near Kill Creek Park. And so we're doing an accessible launch facility there, plus a lot of other amenities related to our outdoor education and programs. And this is being bid right now. What we're calling informally now the Kill Creek Connector Trail. This is an active project now. And if you look on the right, you see the white box and the red lines. The trail pretty much connects the red line, so it's pretty exciting. We have a great streamway trail along Kill Creek, and then we have our great trail system within Kill Creek Park, and we're finally getting to connect those. This is predicated on receiving a piece of land early from Sunflower Redevelopment. So timing is, we're all working hard on that to try to get there, so timing is a little up in the air. Also at Timber Ridge, we have, so now I think I've hit, yes, 2025. So 2025 funded projects are working their way through county budget now. That process is going on now, so it's not final until that is completely done. And projects after this would be in future planned years if they're after 2025. Just wanted to say that to you all. We have a planned shower restroom facility at our Timber Ridge Adventure Center. This is currently intended for group camping. Another group camping site at Big Bull Creek as well. And so I'm kind of excited about this one. So speaking of camping, many of our master plans that are even from the early OO's call for camping, public camping specifically in our park system, and we don't have that yet. We have to leave the county to go to public campsites elsewhere. So there are a lot of challenges, operational challenges that can come with public camping. We have to figure out how to staff and operate it, work together and make that happen. I think it's something that everybody wants to try really hard to do. We just need to have a little bit of a study so we could sit down and get some experts in and help us think through that so that we can hopefully create some of these over time throughout our system. Camp Ranch Phase One. This is exciting. This is planned for a 2026 kickoff. So 2026 design start would put us at roughly 2029 opening, so it's, it's coming. It's in our five-year window. This will be a great area of the county to start seeing significant development in, and it is the last of our new parks that was called out in our legacy plan from 2015. Cedar Nell's Park, Stone Ridge. In 2028, we would plan to kick off the southern portion of Cedar Nell's Park. It's called Stone Ridge. Also, the anticipated project duration is about two to three years. Much of the initial work will be related to preliminary access and infrastructure, similar to Camp Ranch. And we're certainly planning on including trails and nature play and grassy open areas. That's what I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, this is Lindsey Grissay. So what's glamping at the brook? I know what I consider glamping, but I was curious on the Johnson County, what you guys consider that on the last slide.
I think it's a little up in the air, and it would be something that would hopefully be defined a little bit better through our camping feasibility study. It's a great question. That type of thing, glamping has popped up. Do you all know what glamping is? The idea that it's a much, it's camping, it's just glamorous, so it's glamping, which is, I think, where the name came from. So you might be in a yurt, you know, on a platform. You might have electricity. You might have some amenities. This looks like a lot of different things out there, depending on where you look. But if you type in glamping and go look, you'll see all sorts of different things. So we're looking at all, in the camping feasibility study, I'd like to think that we would be looking at normal tent camping, car camping, backpacking camping, you know, tent camping, RVs, a lot of different things on up to glamping potentially. We have to, we have to put some info around that and see if we can progress a bit. Good question. Thank you.
This is Leslie Hind. I, I'm a very avid park goer. I have an eight-year-old and 10-year-old. Thank you for all you do. We really appreciate all the parks. I know, being in scouts and stuff, a lot of the kids, they really flock to the natural playgrounds. And, you know, like, especially like, well, at Alitha, like, they have, you know, you can get the logs and build a cabin, or you can, you know, you can build whatever you want with it. And so anyway, if you could put more of those in, they would love it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And they have to be more reasonable price, too.
I want to say first, it takes a village. We have so many great folks working with us and also seasonals as well. So we do a lot of good work, and thank you for the input. It's good to hear. Is there anything that you're looking at for security? For, I know the parks get, you know, vandalized so often, and is there cameras or anything that they're looking at? Installing, or I don't know what would help, but. There's a safety plan that JCPRD approved and JCPRD board approved in 2018. And where we can get connectivity over time, we've been making a lot of progress since then. Heritage Park is now, cameras are being added to it, so absolutely we're progressing at a good rate. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the update. Thank you for your time.
Take care.
Okay, I think at this point then, Mr. Leipzig, we have the planning commission training survey.
Yes, Madam Chair, Jay Leipzig, I wanted to introduce Zoe Brown, and I'm, I can't remember if Zoe's been before this body previously. Zoe was an intern in our department about a year and a half ago, and then I think that was her first semester in graduate school, planning. Has, as recently went through the program, has actually graduated with her master's degree and then joined our staff full-time. Just what, a couple months ago, a month ago? So wanted to provide a brief plug with Zoe. She's kind of our star intern. But then with that, I'll let her talk about this next topic.
Yeah, so we put together a short survey to kind of gauge your thoughts about different planning topics, things that we could go a little bit more into depth with in the future, and also the format of training sessions. I know that in the past, there have been joint planning commission and zoning board trainings, and those were night meetings, kind of a good chunk of time, but we were also talking about the idea of having smaller topics or covering more specific topics at the regularly scheduled planning commission meetings. So that's one of the questions that will be addressed in the survey. You guys can take a few minutes here to fill that out. Or I know we've got, we've gotten a few already, but I think we could take a couple minutes, three or four minutes here, and then Melissa or I can collect them, and then we'll use this and your responses to shape how we move into trainings in the future and different topics that we'll cover.
The only thing I would add, Jay Leipzig, again, the only thing I would add on that is, is we're looking at, yeah, we, our training in the past have been kind of formal events involving the zoning boards, the planning commission, and everyone together, whereas we'd like to have them more frequently and almost kind of in a less form, less formal setting, where, you know, perhaps we could even do it over a dinner or something like that, a light supper as well during the meeting. Just a different way to, to think about things. And, you know, I know Zoe's come into the department with new ideas as well, so I think we're, we're kind of looking forward to the other ways we can engage with everyone, too. So we're all, any ideas you have, we're all ears. We certainly would like to have them. And, and if you, if you want some additional time to think about it, you can, you can do that as well, just if you would get it back with us or back to us as soon as possible, just so we could start to work on our training and getting everything into the schedule. The most difficult piece of this, of this process is getting it into the calendar for the, for this, this room, this building, and getting the, all of the facilities reserved. So we'll start working on that right away as well.
Yeah, this is Fred Starrett. I'm kind of wondering, I, I think it was a planning, more or less a planning meeting I was at. I've been to one, as I recall. So, and I've kind of looked through it, and there are a number of topics. Would, what amount of time? Because it seems to me if we're going to be here anyway, and we've already got the room, I actually checked the wrong box because I hadn't heard you yet, so. But it seems to me that would be the way to go.
Yeah, Commissioner Starrett, I appreciate that question. I, you know, it would vary, I think, on the topic, but I'm thinking offhand. If it's, like, this evening, for example, you know, the main reason we really wanted to meet is to have the election of officers, then the update from parks. So if we would spend maybe another 30 minutes, our training topic or something like that, I think, and there's all this psychology research on if it's more than 60 minutes, it's too long, and people's attention starts to wane. So I think if we could keep it between 30 and 45 minutes, probably ideal, ideally.
I know we had several meetings that were like 15 minutes last year, and we're already here. Might as well make them an hour. And so I'd be more in tune to that.
And then we've also had meetings, we had the zoning board and the planning commission together. It was like two and a half hours or three hours, and that was a little long. It's like always that happy medium between the two.
Yeah, this is Lindsey Grissay. First of all, welcome to the county, and you have, you work with such great people. Congratulations. The, I have really benefited from the trainings that have been offered. I guess my only, you know, maybe, I don't know if it would be a minor tweak or continue doing this, is last year I was the only attorney, I think, on the board. And one of the things I think that was challenging was a lot of the advice and training that we were given was not, was just kind of more best practices, but it wasn't, hey, the law, you know, the statute requires that you do X or you do Y. And I think one of the things, you know, and I found myself kept, you know, I kept asking the question, okay, so is that advice based on what the Opens Records Act requires or something? And well, no, it doesn't require that. No, you could do something different. No, this is just how I've seen it done. And I think certainly everybody on this board wants that advice, especially, you know, on whether it's a best practice or not. But I think it's helpful to know what, what the foundation or where the basis of that advice is coming from, because then we know whether we can deviate from that advice if we so choose, right? If, if it's a statute requiring us to do it, then we better not deviate, right? But if it's just, you know, kind of a best practice or what we've seen done before, at least that tells us what level of flexibility we have. So with regard to the training, I think anchoring the advice, each bit of advice in, okay, the statute requires this, here's, you know, here's my best, you know, my best practice or advice. I think that would help guide us all. I think now that we have more attorneys on the board, I think it is more helpful. But I will tell you from the board members from last term, they took that advice as that's what the law is. And very often, that wasn't what the law required. It was just, here's what I think is a good idea. And I think it would be helpful to kind of make that distinction on the training.
Commissioner Starrett, I don't recall that, so I think it was before my time perhaps. But if there are statutes that control, I would assume that the legal staff could make those available to us so that we can incorporate that in the training.
That is a great comment.
Madam Chair, this is Andrew Logan. I even think it could be effective if staff were to present just, you know, at occasional meetings for a couple minutes, say like a crash course on a specific topic. You know, it could be something that's fairly general in nature. You could do something like, you know, special use permits, for example, something of that nature that's just kind of a crash course on here, here's what the process looks like. Here's what's governing the process. Here's your role within it. Could be a couple minutes within staff comments, something to that effect. Might be a nice way to just sort of have a little bit of education.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Grissay. So you're almost kind of saying it'd be nice both to get like the best practices, the legal kind of what's governing our process, and then just practical know-how about things that the county interacts with the public, you know? practical know-how about things that the county interacts with the public, you know, on permits and what they do, what the process would be, why someone would do it.
Yeah, and just a few minutes that gives a nice primer so people understand and know what's coming before them.
Kelly Rass, this is, yeah, and I would say the same thing, but just bring it out a little more. I mean, I, all the ones that I've been to, Peg Trent has always led them, so it's come from a very specific, you know, perspective. I'd like to hear sometimes like, you know, staff say like, when we get an applicant in, why, why do we approve this? Why can't we approve? Because I've had that conversation with Jay. You know, what, what are your guidelines, too? So we sort of understand what it's like to be in your shoes. Some, I'd even like county commissioners even to come up to the podium and let us know why they rule the way they do, or what kind of guides them. Just also so that maybe that also builds a little bit more consistency and respect between the three different boards that have to interact with each other. So we kind of understand where they're coming from, because we all do three different things, but yet they're connected. But we're all coming from different perspectives, and I think if we kind of fill in those gaps sometimes, that might be good, especially if you haven't been involved in the, in any of the processes.
Yes. So. I totally agree. I, I actually have a meeting set up this week to talk with our, uh, Information DTI about putting a video together that would kind of walk through the whole process with staff and getting them like telling us how, how do we get from one call, some random question to approval by the board? Because it's, it's a long process and there are a lot of things that happen, and I'm learning this, you know, as a full-time staff person now, but it's, it's, there's a lot that goes into it. So, and, and, and you don't really know all the three entities.
I was gonna mention that, uh, Jay Leipzig again, and you could hear, you know, Zoe's ideas are great to have this kind of training format or YouTube channel or something about how to, you know, uh, uh, completing a special use permit application, for example, from beginning to end. Uh, but I, just to Commissioner, um, uh, Rass's point about, uh, this perspective where we have staff's perspective and the legal perspective, we'll have a lot of opportunities to do that this next year as we work through the subdivision regulations and, and, you know, I'm thinking just top of my head or something where we can, we could talk about the statutory provisions, but then, um, you know, we could, we could, uh, discuss how, how, how staff handles applications or cases. But then we'll also have, we could have a consultant available to talk about what are best practices, you know, what is, what, what do other cities, how would they handle this type of thing, especially as we go through, um, because it's really kind of an educational, educational piece as we work through our new subdivision regulations. And I, I think that would be, um, probably very beneficial for everyone, for staff, too, for, for you all, I think, uh, and the public as well.
Wonderful. Um, thank you for, um, welcome again, and thank you for soliciting our feedback, and obviously I think we'll be happy to give it. So thank you. Um, so at that, at this point, you, um, Mr. Leipzig, do you want to go through the director's report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My, my points will be very, very brief. Uh, just as, as a reminder, we will have a, uh, summary report for the, uh, uh, for the board, uh, similar to what we did at our, our annual meeting where we provided the review, uh, the year-end review. We'll have that, a summary report for all of the, uh, the other zoning boards. That way you're aware of kind of what the activity is happening, the other, other zoning, are both of our zoning boards as well. Um, the other thing to mention is we, uh, recently had a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, uh, and met on June 12th. Um, that is the first meeting they've had, I believe, in a year. It's been, been a while. So that group meets, meets as necessary. We went through a recent reorganization of, of that, um, that board, and so, um, they elected a chairman and a vice chair, um, and then, um, uh, approved their, actually made the recommendation for approval of their new bylaws. Those will be approved or hopefully be approved by the Board of, Board of, Board of County Commissioners on Thursday, uh, morning. So uh, they are underway, and, uh, we don't have any other cases on the horizon, but, uh, we're, we're ready to go if we do, um, get them. So I'm glad to have that, that work completed. Uh, and just as an update, you know, we, we went, went through the last year and a half reorganizing all of our boards. We started with the Planning Commission, uh, I think a year and a half ago, then both of our zoning boards at our, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals. We also have a couple of other advisory boards in the, um, Planning, Housing and Community Development Department that are also going through the reorganization process. So um, I think we've got one more board to do, but we're almost finished. So, um, and this is part of an overall effort for the Board of County Commissioners to, to look at consolidating the boards and commissions. I think there's uh, something like 29 boards and commissions that they wanted to, um, try to, uh, um, uh, reorganize and, and look where there's some redundancies and, um, to make it more efficient.
Excuse me, uh, Commissioner Starek. Um, I was wondering if we, and I don't know that we interact with the Board of Zoning Appeals, but I would be interested to know who's on it. They don't, they meet irregularly, it sounds like.
I can, um, Melissa, do you have that information, any chance of who the new appointees are? Commissioner Starek, I don't have that information.
I don't need it right now. I just would like to at some point.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
I could tell you that the chair was Andrew Belt and the vice chair is AJ Lang. But I can't tell you the other members off, offhand, but, uh, yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, the, uh, Chairman Garcia, so, um, I was on the board last year, and so it's a board that meets rather infrequently, only when there's a um, an at, like a case that comes up and it's, um, but it was an interesting board to be on.
Uh, continuing on the, just a quick update, you mentioned the zoning and subdivision regulations are, are coming together. We did send out, um, on our request for proposals, um, uh, on the, uh, on our ion wave system, which is our, um, RFP response system that we have countywide. Uh, we did receive, uh, several responses to that. Uh, staff has, has made it an initial selection, but we're still in the negotiation process with the, uh, uh, with this proposed consultant. So we expect that to be, to be finished here in the next couple of weeks. It's, it's taken just a bit longer just because of vacation schedules and, and getting everyone together in the, in the summertime. Uh, but we're hoping to get that done here in the next 60 days and get that in front of the, the Board of County Commissioners. Um, and then, uh, once that, that piece is, is done, you will see that, that group with that consultant probably quite often. Um, we still have not determined what that format would look, format would look like, if it's a, if it's a presentation at every meeting, or if we'll do every other one on, on a variety of topics, but, uh, that will be quite, uh, uh, about a, about an 18-month process. So you'll, you'll, you'll meet them, you'll see them, um, several times throughout the next years, a year and a half as we go through that endeavor. And I think, um, as we talked about tonight, some of the training opportunities that we have to do uh, additional, um, education between and to get feedback from, from you all on the process and also the best practices, I think will be very helpful as you move forward. So, um, the other last item is the Health Environment, um, Presentation on the Waste Management Plan. Uh, we're, we'll get that scheduled, uh, sometime later on the summer. Uh, and the other note, uh, Madam Chair, is just that I would propose, because historically we have, we have done this, is taking a break in the, uh, in July for a kind of a summer meeting, just to cancel the, the July meeting and then regroup in August, and then, um, that will give staff time to, we'll have, um, the consultant identified at that point. Have the, the, the contract finalized and be able to have a formal kickoff for that process is kind of what, what we were thinking. Uh, but I would just propose to go ahead and cancel the meeting in July. We don't have, have any other real critical uh, pressing items coming forward that we need to, to have this group meet in the next month.
Wasn't there an email that went out about it being canceled?
Um,
It says right here for.
Oh, was that for zoning board?
Right here it says.
Yeah, the.
Oh, zoning board got canceled. Okay, sorry.
So you're saying the meeting that's on the agenda gets canceled?
Yes, that's what I would propose is just canceling the one on Tuesday, July 23rd.
I second that motion, Craig Connell.
I heard that motion, no, Lindsay Garcia. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. All opposed? Okay, so then we will cancel the July 23rd, 2024 meeting and then have the follow-up meeting in August.
Okay. And that concludes my, my report.
Wonderful. Um, is there any, uh, old news or new business, old, old business that any of the commissioners want to bring up before the board? Okay, well, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I have a question for new business, though. Um, this is Kelly, uh, Commissioner Rass. Um, I had Joyce Woodard reached out to me by email wanting to double check that we received three articles that she sent to you. I don't know if we've missed them versus email, or if, I know they weren't in our packets. I didn't know if they missed the cutoff, but.
Okay, I apologize.
Just so I can give her an answer.
Thank you. I believe they're on the website.
They are posted on the website and they were emailed out. The packets went out, um, prior to her, to Joy sending those to us.
I missed them, so they were, they were emailed out. And, okay, got it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I was gonna say something and I wasn't sure if we had, what the status was on that, so thank you.
Okay, and, um, that'll be the new status is they'll, they'll, they'll still get emailed out if they miss the packet, and then they'll always be on the website. Perfect. Thank you.
Wonderful. So can, um, we get a motion to adjourn?
Kelly Rass to make a motion to adjourn. Sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.